This conference will now be recorded.
The meeting is being recorded and any other commissioner announcements? Paul, do you have any other staff items?
Just to quickly say that this is an exciting and adventure-filled week here. The upstairs, south side of the building where planning and zoning is, is completely empty now. So More Ways Moving came over and took things over to the new building and we're rocking and rolling. So thanks, everyone, for your patience while we work. Our department will be remote for the next couple of weeks as things are getting set up. But we're still, good news is we got lots of experience with that over the last year.
Yeah, yeah. That's great.
Anything else?
Can I ask Paul a question that has nothing to do with this? You know, we used to meet in, at the police station, some of the committees. Do you know whether non-city, if I wanted to have a meeting of some group of people, do you know if that's available to the public?
It will be available in the not-too-distant future, Michael. Right now, with essentially, in the month of July, that space is being reserved for anything that the city might need because there are no conference rooms available in any building right now. But I expect that sometime later in the summer it will be available again.
Yeah, so it's not just restricted to city people. I mean, the garden, the garden club, for instance, could have.
For the moment, it is restricted.
Maybe afterwards.
But afterwards, I expect it'll open up again.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then, any other staff items? Paul, okay, we are going to move on to item four, the continued review of the draft environmental protection standards and other LDR amendments, starting with the timeline and schedule, which is in the packet, this very large item. So Paul, start us off talking about the schedule.
Yeah, I wanted to flip the agenda items and put this one up first. I don't have too, too much to talk about this evening except to, you know, I guess underscore to everyone, you have the target of the end of interim zoning to complete the work that you want to have completed that relates to the interim zoning bylaw. In order to do that, things back up pretty quickly. So that expires on November 18th. The council needs to have warned their draft of the amendments in the newspaper by that date. So that means they need to have received it before in order to take a vote and then put it in the newspaper, which means that you need to have warned and held your hearing and then made the decision to vote it on to council. And so we're really talking about sort of the end of September for you all for a draft that you are largely comfortable with. And then October during the waiting time for the public hearing to do any sort of legal last-minute tweaks and that kind of thing. So I guess the main thing that I, the main two things that I wanted to chat about with you tonight is, one, there are some things with sort of double Xs next to them that we'll be looking at. And probably at your first meeting in August, we're going to ask sort of a go-no-go. A lot of that language is drafted. But in terms of, do you want to try to take those on now? There are, in some cases, sort of ancillary to interim zoning. And I could understand that you may or may not decide that you've had time to properly review them. And then the second thing that I wanted to chat with you about is what, with goal in mind of having the bulk of your work ready, I think that I'm going to default to being a little bit pushy over the next little while to make sure that you're hitting your deadlines. So my apologies, not apologies in advance, that I might sort of push you to make a call of yes or no, or, you know, save it for a future time so that you were able to hit your deadlines and that you don't wind up without a product at the end of this.
I can also attempt to do that. I know I, I really love when we all agree on something. And I sometimes try hard to get us to all agree, but I, you know, I'll, I'll try to help us move along as well. Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I've got my own view on, on the priorities and a couple of comments. On the first item, on environmental protection standards, it seems to me that we ought to be, we ought to be able to get this done sooner than what is indicated on that, on that chart. Because we're, we're pretty close. And I would have thought that we could bring back that last finalized draft, you know, back into the, the early part of, of August. It's, you know, that's a month and a half away. Damn it. Let me get rid of this. So that would, that was my sort of first priority. And then I thought that PUDs, going down to, to work on the PUDs, and after that, TDRs. I just don't know whether we can get a hell of a lot more than that done. But if we get those three items done, they're the most important, as I see it, to be completed during interim zoning. So Article 12, 10, 12, Article, Chapter 15, PUD, and whatever the chapter is going to be for TDRs. I believe it'll be possibly a new one. That's my, my two cents worth. Because taking on more, there might be one or two other little things, but taking on more than that would, would, I think jeopardize our opportunity to finish these key, key LDRs before the end of IZ. I don't know if anybody else has a similar or contrary view, but.
Yeah, I think, I think that that was good to hear, Michael. And I guess I have a follow-up question to Paul. I just want to make sure I understand these Xs. Like, are all the things that are colored in, in gold or various shades of yellow, brown, are those things that you feel are far enough along with the drafting? And we've seen previous versions and things that you feel like we could get there and be done? And the only things that you think are kind of really big up in the air things are the double X ones that are really kind of questionable? Because like, I'm, I'm looking down the list and I'm seeing a lot of things that we've already seen multiple iterations of. And then I know Michael just mentioned the TDRs, which we've talked in generalities about, but haven't really seen any language. But that doesn't have Xs, like, that actually is shaded in. So I guess I'm wondering where, kind of how you differentiate between the different things on this schedule.
Sure, so I guess a couple of things and I'll build to your answer. In order to do the PUDs, the subdivision, the master plan and the site plan things need to go with it because it's all currently tied together. The good news is that most of that you've already done and with some minor adjustments, you've given the thumbs up to. So it's really just, the work that remains in those is sewing pieces up after you've made your decisions on PUDs, just to make sure that it all fits together. But this is the work plan with there. You have not really talked about site plan standards. There's not a lot in there, but it is critical in the sense that currently, PUDs are used as sort of a general waiver tool for things that are really minor. In, you know, somebody wants to get a, you know, two-foot setback waiver or something on a property. And the only tool currently available is to, is to, is to be a PUD. So the site plan standards under state law can take that role. And it's drafted, it's very tight. I think you can look at it in 15 minutes and say thumbs up or thumbs down to it. The biggest piece that I think is a discussion item for you on this list is which changes to underlying zoning districts you ultimately want to do. There's really only a couple, there's a couple that have to happen if you're going to do PUDs because the current zoning districts specifically give density bonuses through their PUDs. So that would need to be changed. There's a lot of things which are, would be nice to do and which were in the draft that we gave you in January. But if you were to give us the guidance to say, let's just do the bare minimum of what needs to happen in order to make this functional for now, then we would pare that back.
That sounds like a sensible thing to do because, you know, getting the bare bones done is better than nothing. And as you said, it can be fixed later.
And then insofar as TDRs go, Michael did take the effort quite some time ago to draft out, you know, a, a good first draft of what a TDR article would look like. The main piece of it that is not fully fleshed out is what would one, where do you actually want to have increased allowances, increased density, increased bulk, et cetera? There's a draft of it in there, but it hasn't really been discussed. So a question for you all that I think I put in your, for your next meeting is, do you want staff to take a stab at, you know, working from what Michael prepared? And take a shot at it? I don't think realistically in your timeframe, you've got a lot of room to sort of discuss each individual section of the city. And, but you might be able to have a, you know, a, a first cut at it that you can say, you know, this will work for the time being or not.
Yeah, I've, I've written a kind of draft ordinance, if you like. But it's, it's, well, some items will raise eyebrows, but the, the areas are pretty simple, which means, you know, anywhere, anywhere except where we, where we don't want development. And I don't know, Paul, do you want me to send this draft again to you? And you distribute it to everybody or?
Sure, I've got it, but why don't you send it? Because I don't know what's happening with our servers in the next few days. So why don't you send it over again? I do think that there is some, that there's going to be a tough decision for you all to make about whether to, you know, go with a, a piece of it, all of it, or none of it in the time being. Because there are some pretty substantial things and we'll have to figure out how that ties into inclusionary zoning that you've adopted.
I am, I know we had looked at a map and I know Monica had done some additional work on a map of receiving areas. And actually Monica's are hand-ups, maybe it's about that.
Well, I just was going to say that, you know, Michael, I honestly don't remember being a part of the TDR committee as well. I don't remember how much, just so people know, I don't know that the TDR committee spent time on that draft, nor did we put it in the final recommendation. So I just, just an FYI, that's not coming from the TDR committee necessarily as part of its final report. I think that's accurate, right, Michael? And, and that, you know, when we're looking at language of a reg, I mean, that does get very detailed versus, you know, is that the better way to spend our focus? Or is it to look at something like that map? And even just as a, more about the conversation of if we're going to allow TDRs to go someplace outside of the SEQ, can, should we instead discuss simply that? And then let staff take that information to then use whatever document they want as its base and evolve the TDR regs from there? I think more, the strategic conversation may be the better one to have at this point. So just something to think about rather than getting the language of regs. And I did, I did have another comment on the schedule, but it's unrelated to TDRs. So you can pull me back in for that.
So Duncan and then Bernie?
Yeah, I just had a question on, on some of the PUD stuff. I mean, we, I know we, we've talked about TND pretty thoroughly, the conservation. I think we've, we've got some work to do on that. The other, the infill and the NCD, I don't, are they easy plug-and-play? Because we really haven't spent a lot of time talking about those.
Right, so, good question Duncan. So I've lined up to have Sharon Murray, so just a reminder to everyone that from right after your next meeting until mid-August, I'm going to be on parental leave. So I've lined up Sharon to work directly with you on the meetings of the 13th, the 27th, and the first meeting in August. And so you all can make the call to say where you feel you're at with these. I think she has some thoughts to share with you about, you know, if a great deal of your discussion and focus has been appropriately in areas that are largely unbuilt in the city, which is more the traditional neighborhood and the conservation PUD and to a certain extent, the infill. You've had less focus on the neighborhood commercial. I think she's going to have the discussion with you about how would you, how would you feel about that piece of it not happening immediately? Do you consider that to be directly consequential to interim zoning or not? And so that's, that's what discussion she will have with you. And then, you know, work through the next couple, those three meetings to produce the things that you prioritize as being most important to get to the level that you want them.
Real quick, second part of my question, you just kind of hit on it. Is there a prioritization of this from your standpoint that we should be looking at? I mean, are there pieces you can say, yeah, we can wait till after IZ for that? And is that what the double Xs are or?
It's most of the double Xs in there. If, I, I think that if you would like, what I would like to do for you, if you would like to have it, is Paul's specific recommendation on, these are the pieces that are either need to happen or that should be non-controversial, that would be good to advance at this time, to just stick with it. And things that you don't need to need to advance. It's largely the double X things, but a few of those ones towards the bottom of the page, I think you could do, like, for example, you know, you had talked at your last meeting about childcare, childcare piece, it's unrelated, but it's really simple to draft. And, you know, if you feel that's non-consequential, then you can just do it. Not, not non-conce, non-controversial. But I think what I would prioritize for you generally is almost treating those things like a consent agenda that if a couple of commissioners have substantial questions, I would almost, for those ones, say, all right, you know, if, if, if more than one commissioner has any concerns about this one, let's just pull it. Because I don't think you have the time to have a hour-long debate on any of those subjects.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I had said Bernie and then Monica.
I just wanted to follow up very briefly on the TDR discussion. So I kind of view that, you know, these environmental protection standards and.
Bernie, can you get a bit closer to your mic?
I don't know, does this work?
Yes.
Okay. My wife switched out the headset on me. Anyway, um, so, you know, my thought is, is, you know, we definitely need to get through the environmental protection standards and the PUD stuff. So I would consider that to be pretty high-priority stuff. In terms of the, the TDR stuff, I guess my question would be whether that's, you know, an integral part of what we're doing, that we really need to do something on it? Or whether it can wait until we finish IZ and then handle the TDR stuff later? And I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on that. I just think that, you know, we should focus on the environmental protection standards and PUDs and then maybe save the TDR stuff till last or separately afterwards.
Yeah, that is the, the last of my priorities, but, you know.
I think I was next to speak.
Yeah, Monica?
So, so, first of all, that would probably be a city council question because they put TDRs on their to-do list for us. So maybe we get city council confirmation of that. The other thing was, Paul, we had, we made the motion a while ago and I thought it was the infill PUD that we were going to hold off on because it was two acres. We said anything below two acres, we were going to hold off on until after IZ. Was that the infill? And if so, is there a reason that we should reverse that thought? Maybe it was something else, but I thought it was infill.
It was the, it was the smaller versions of PUDs. And I guess what I would say, Monica, is that I've had some follow-up conversations with Sharon about that. And what I was trying to relay to her was that you wanted to take, the commission voted to remove the least critical component of it, which is what you had seen. She has some, some, some thoughts on exactly where and under what circumstances an infill PUD might be something that you find is pretty critical. And so she wanted to have that be essentially the first thing she talks with you about at your next meeting. And then you can make the call, but she, she felt in my discussions with her that, that there was some things that you would like to have the discussion on and that frankly, she thought that you might want to see that rather than the NCD in terms of what best meets the needs of the community. But let me not have the discussion tonight because she wanted to tee that up to have it with you.
Yeah. Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, just a, a comment on the TDRs. When we might find, if I'm really smarter than I think I am, that the draft ordinance that I've, I've written might cover a lot of what we want to do. And if it doesn't, fine, discard it or push it off until, till later. But we, we might find that a lot of the work is already done when you, when you read it. Obviously, there are things that aren't going to remain in it because they may be controversial or don't fit in with, with the other parts of our, of our LDRs. But I'd like to leave it there for now. If I, because that, you know, my priorities are similar to Bernie's. Article 10 and 12, PUDs, and then if we, if we've got time, TDRs.
Paul?
That's great feedback, thank you. Assuming that you resolve what you're looking for on the developments/conservation side in the southeast quadrant, which is part of what you're discussing tonight, the remaining part of the TDR discussion is essentially, where do you want to create new receiving zones? And the, the, the discussion for you all to consider is, would you be comfortable in creating those markets for receiving at a later date than the adoption of whatever you're going to pursue with environmental protection standards and/or the rest of the PUD thing? So I think that's the question for you to consider. And, you know, if you're comfortable in saying that we know that it's not the full market for receiving that we anticipate having, but it's satisfactory for the time being, knowing that not everybody's going to, you know, rush to want to sell them on day one, then, then you can make that call. So that's, don't decide that tonight, but we will be coming back to you very shortly with that.
So.
Go ahead, Michael.
My, my sense is that we don't have a hell of a lot more to do on, on Article 12. We do need to complete the work. We, we, we did part of the, what do we call it? Forested, forested habitat blocks review, we've basically finished it. We've decided which fingers are going to be cut, which are going to be reduced, and so on. We, at our last meeting and possibly the one before, what we have not done yet are the other recommendations in that, in that story map related to changing NRT to NR and changing some items, I mean, making some items which were in the habitat block, make them NRP. I just looked at one or two, but it's something that we need to complete.
I guess what I would say, Michael, is that's essentially from a big-picture perspective, that's the next item on your agenda.
Oh.
Okay, well, it sounds like we need to generally be focused and try to come to some decisions without a lot of extraneous dialogue, which I sometimes let go on longer than maybe it needs to. So, anything else on the schedule? Okay, so we can move to the next item.
Wait a minute, yes. I did have, would, good, would, Paul, to make this a simpler document to work with, Paul, can you sort of reconstitute showing the priorities that we've looked at or suggested this evening? And maybe then the, the other items, the parts of the site plan and master plan standards that are essential and leave the others for later? In other words, divide and rule.
Yes, I think that for the most part, I think it's there. But we can, we can take out the things like, for example, the add-ins to the subdivision standards. We can make the call right now and say, you know, the traffic overlay district transportation standards, we're not going to do that. The rest of the language you've already seen and generally given a thumbs up to. So the things that are on the work plan are really just staff cleanup and you're giving a final thumbs up to it. But yes, happy to do what you just asked for.
Okay, and Lisa asked if we're taking public comments on the schedule? And yes, when I said, does anyone else have anything I should have specifically asked about the public? Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Excuse me, I'm Lisa Kingsbury, I'm the Associate Director of Planning at UVM. And I just wanted to get some clarity. I noticed that there is an item with double Xs on there about zoning of UVM parcels. And I thought I understood from the commission after the public hearing when you were discussing what items you wanted to spend a little bit more time on. The commission was interested in hearing from UVM before finalizing the environmental protection standards. So I just wanted to understand whether that is something that you want to do with us during this process? Or if the thought is that you wanted to hold off on hearing from UVM until things are finalized?
That is a good question. Bernie, did you, did you and the commission have a discussion about this specifically in the last couple of meetings? I know I, I read the minutes, but I might have missed something.
Yeah, we talked about it. My recollection, and certainly it may not be perfect, so other people can chime in. But my understanding was that, was that we were going to have a discussion on the UVM stuff before we finalized everything. So that's my recollection, but.
Okay, Monica?
I think that I agree with what Bernie said, but it was in terms of Articles 10 and 12 and not rezoning. So maybe the reason that he called out this line under, underlying zoning is, is different. It's just we didn't talk about discussing zoning. We talked about addressing some of UVM's comments from the feedback we received in Articles 10 and 12. So it was limited to that and not zoning.
Yeah, that, that makes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, yes.
So are there items that the commission wants to hear from UVM on during this process?
I think it was reviewing the comments that we'd received in public hearing from UVM. And then you're being present to clarify or discuss, give you some time to help in that piece is what we had discussed. And I thought that, excuse me. I'm sorry, I just was saying, I thought we did actually have that lined up for a future agenda. So I don't know where I saw that.
So you did discuss sort of three important, I'm going to say technical, but more than technical issues that UVM had raised in the functionality of Articles 10 and 12. And you did provide as guidance to clarify, to, to correct those three. So I think that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but the remainder of the discussion is much more broadly about, not the functionality of the environmental protection standards, but the, the discussion about the vision for the various parcels that UVM owns and where they fit into the zoning and land use designations. Big picture, meaning, you know, is this? Big picture, meaning, you know, is this a future campus area? Is this a future neighborhood? Is this a future conservation area, that kind of thing?
Right, and I think we've had, so we've had a couple of discussions. And I know, Paul, you and I have talked about that, that, that larger underlying zoning discussion. I know that, that the commission did look at a couple of the items from our letter and did address them, and we appreciate that. We, you know, we do still have some concerns and it sounds like you will be working on the conservation PUD standards, which I think is one of the important things. We do have three pretty large parcels that are heavily covered with habitat blocks. And so I think that conservation PUD, for us to be able to review that and understand, you know, what we will be able to do or not do with those is, is important. So it sounds like we'll, at this point, we'll follow along and we'll review the drafts and, and comment on those as they come out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? Okay, then moving on to 4B, the Commission Discussion on Land Use Conservation Objectives in the Southeast quadrant and citywide. So I was very pleased to see that everyone completed their homework on the big picture questions, which Paul has put the map up of the areas that we provided some general kind of big picture feedback on that hopefully will help us focus some of our decisions about PUDs and applicability and different remaining environmental protection tools. So Paul, do you want to kind of review?
Yeah, so just a super quick preamble here. Thank you, everyone, for doing your individual homework. I'm going to share sort of my summary of that in just a second. I didn't send it out in advance because I, for the, for the public's purpose, I know that this was a, everyone's first individual look at it. And I didn't want you to feel as though you are locked into this is the final place that I'm standing on these things. It was to start a dialogue. In terms of, I think you, you all essentially hit this at the right level, which is trying to take a half step back of what are you trying to achieve in each of these areas? And in some cases, they, they might get split or you might have additional areas. And then I guess we would ask for, if you're comfortable with it, the, that Sharon and I take a crack at fulfilling your objectives with whether the right tool is a conservation PUD in a certain area or it's to recommend that it be only allowed to be a traditional neighborhood or that it be a change in the NRP zoning district or what have you, that, that allow us to take a crack to fulfill your shared goals. Last thing on this is that the, the council is going to be having a similar discussion to you next Tuesday on this same subject. Understanding that, you know, this is pretty critical and this is, I, I don't want to say at the heart of the adoption of interim zoning, but it's certainly central to it. And so the council's going to take whatever you have preliminarily discussed this evening and have a dialogue next Tuesday at their meeting. And you're obviously all more than welcome to participate. Anything on that, anything before I start sharing and go through this?
Oh, well, I guess one thing is that, you know, I think another reason why it made sense for Paul to not share the spreadsheet is because each of us may have had a slightly different vision as to what the A, B, or C kind of really meant to us as well. So I think there's a little bit of kind of overlap between the, the different kind of categories and, you know, how people might vision those, so.
So Jessica, where do, where do you want to start geographically here? And then I'll, and then I'll pull it up.
The middle? I don't know. I guess when I looked at, and Paul, maybe you actually have some ideas on, on where there was the most consensus. But I know when I was thinking about this, I was thinking about the Southeast quadrant as it's currently zoned, kind of thinking about kind of the number five and kind of working out from there. And then I also did my own mental exercise of working down from a more developed area into it. So, you know, I don't know if one of those approaches makes sense to you.
Let's start with five then. So here on the screen for you, and I can zoom in a little bit also. This is a compilation of everybody's answers. So in the, I tried to color code it a little bit. The, at the top two, there are the, essentially creating a TND. The, in the, in the sort of pinkish color, the orangish color is something like a conservation PUD or having some additional land go into an NRP or resources. And then letter C at the bottom is to, is votes to have this area be essentially something like an NRP for the whole area. So area five is the one that Jessica wanted to start with. That's the one that centered around the Mill Market and Delhi. And so what you see here is that four members, that's it, that's the number four there, suggested that that really ought to be a traditional neighborhood. Let me just get through this for one second, Monica, and then I'm, then I see you. Then a couple of members suggested that it should be a mix. And then a couple of members thought that it should be principally conservation, but you'll see that there are comments associated with that. So Monica, go ahead.
Just that the same asterisk applies to every single time you see my name.
Yes, so.
Yeah, my comment was, my, my asterisk belongs to every single area.
So, yeah. Monica's asterisks on it is essentially that, and I don't mind if I'm paraphrasing, Monica, but essentially that with the caveat that things can be phased and that, that, that there be certain restrictions on the way it takes place. Is that, I'm, without trying to get into a detailed discussion on it.
Phasing PUDs and not allowing crossovers of wetlands and habitat blocks. New.
And I know I said five, but I almost wonder if everybody's used to working from one through eight. Maybe I should have asked that.
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Five is looking extremely complicated with all those extra notes and such things.
Right.
Yeah, I can't, I can't read that while we're having this meeting unless you send it out to us, Paul. It's too small.
Okay.
Or, or keep going with five, whatever you think. You're, you're.
Pick one, Jessica, if you want to start with one, that's fine. I think we should just get into the heart of a dialogue here.
Let's start, let's go back to one. Because we all.
Michael, your, your notice is fair and I'm happy to email it as we speak. But I think it's most important that you talk it through anyway. So I'm going to bring back this map. So the areas in here, this is number one. This is the area essentially along Heinsberg Road. It's south of Butler Farms. It could also include a little bit of the land on Highland Terrace. There's a few properties there. The bulk of folks felt that, four members felt that it should be principally conservation. Jessica and Ted felt that there could be the possibility of a mix depending on, Jessica felt that the prime ag in that area, which I'll turn on in a second, should be conserved. Ted also felt that the prime ag area should be conserved. Bernie, Bernie and Monica felt that these, this was appropriate to be a full neighborhood. Largely, I'm assuming that you're talking about the, what's called the Marcel Meadows property. So I'm going to go and turn on the ag soils and you can start your discussion. And of course, it's choosing not to look.
Well, I think, you know, I, there's a lot of convergence around kind of the lower part, the, the second two options of either, you know, a mix of conservation and kind of some new housing neighborhood or kind of leaning towards conservation. I think one thing, and I did, and I did say, and it sounds like Ted did as well, that, you know, the prime ag on this parcel was, or this area was important. But I think one thing I did struggle with is that, I know it's not showing on the map, but it's kind of along the road, which I think is maybe a little bit of a part of this discussion. You know, it kind of winds up right over the number one versus kind of at the back of the property where there's properties where there's other conservation. So I don't know if that's something we want to talk about as well. Duncan?
Yeah, this one was, was a tough one for me because it's, it's such a large parcel, that open field. I went back and forth. I guess I would be okay with development on the edges if we could somehow figure that out. But trying to, my, my big concern was this big open space to try to conserve as much of that as possible. Sort of, you know, putting the development along, you know, up, up, up towards Butler Farms or towards the road. And trying to conserve the interior of it. But that was my view. I went back and forth on that one, the option C or option B.
Monica and then Bernie?
So when I looked at all of them, I, I also turned basically everything off except for city water and sewer. And all but block two have a direct, have direct contact with water and sewer. I know that there were some challenges in area one in terms of heights of hills and such that would prevent sewer and water from happening. So I guess what I would say is, you know, my comment about it being acceptable for being buildable also takes into account that there are areas that can't really be buildable because of the, the topography. And I'm not sure if that's something that you can point to, Paul. But there is a direct connection to water and sewer for that parcel.
So Monica, to that question, largely in the area where that is, where the prime ag is essentially, is very high elevation. So that applies both sides of Heinsberg Road in there. And what that means is that likely development in that area would need to be on wells. You can still do development with wells, but the density starts to decrease somewhat. It's just a simple, you know, it's, it's a simple matter of math that it's above where the water tower is. And there's not enough land in that, at that elevation in the city to be worthwhile to increase water capacity. So it doesn't mean no build, but it probably wouldn't be a full TND. It might be something closer to, you know, conservation scale on that, around that area.
Well, so if that's, because I didn't know where that, that topography was. So if that's the case, then I would. On, on number, on circle one, I, I'm currently in the A in the first row, but I would be open to it being the combination and making this area, because it's difficult to build there. And to me, if you just have well, you're going to be looking at sprawl rather than neighborhood condensed. So I would be open to mine going to the part conserve, part build on number one for that reason.
Right, and then we have Bernie and then Michael?
Yeah, so my approach was kind of similar to Monica's in that I look where the existing developments were. And essentially if the land was contiguous with an existing development, then I, I rated that as something to look at a traditional neighborhood for. If it was not contiguous, if it was kind of out on its own, then I looked at that as something that would either have a conservation PUD or, you know, some kind of, you know, city purchase or something to conserve it because it's not contiguous to anything else. Having said that, in light of, you know, and I think it's good we're discussing each of these, I'm certainly, you know, not in favor of having to do something that's going to involve wells either. So after hearing that, you know, I'm kind of in the same camp Monica is. And that's to, you know, do a, a TND or a conservation PUD on the part that, you know, has access to water and the stuff that's higher elevation. And, you know, in this case, primarily within a prime ag area, I'd be willing to, you know, definitely set that aside.
Okay.
Yes, I wanted to comment on, you know, the, the, the water and sewer infrastructure that we have was laid out a long time ago, and long before we knew what we need to do for environmental, environmental protection, conservation, climate change mitigation. So I did not use it and I don't think we should use it as a criteria to guide us as to where we should develop. The other problem, and this is, this is a perennial problem that I have. We're talking about environmental protection. Oh, well, I'm talking about environmental protection. You're talking about where we can build. There's a, you know, I don't understand this. We all can be focusing on what can we conserve, not where can we build? It's really upsetting.
So Michael, I know that this discussion might be upsetting for some of us, but so we actually asked, you know, Steph and I were asking to have that bigger picture of both, where should we conserve as well as the, where might be appropriate for development? Because I think that in the big picture, they actually go hand in hand. You know, it's really just the opposite of the other, or, you know, some might say. So I mean, this, this homework really was to have people think about both. And, you know, so it is the same conversation about the big picture. And, you know, it sounds like for this area one, both Bernie and Monica are moved to the category two. And, you know, at least four of us have specifically mentioned in the homework or in the verbal tonight about kind of having conservation area on the, kind of the, the front area where there's the prime ag. And then some cluster, and then some clustered kind of non-sprawl type, you know, development adjacent to the other neighborhood that's there. You know, obviously outside of the other resources. So I mean, it sounds like we're coming to some convergence about some neighborhood, but, you know, kind of concentrating conservation, additional conservation in the prime ag area. Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, I understand if you're going to, if you're going to promote or recommend development on this parcel, then, yeah, it should be on, on the east, eastern side along 116. And the west, where there's prime ag, should be largely what I said for item one, regular rural conservation for, for most of that and part of the other small parcel that's included in, in area one. But you know how I feel about what we're doing? That we're supposed to be looking at environmental protection and not trying to find out where we can build. But I'm only one out of seven, I recognize that. So I have to make my feelings, my views understood and, and known. So yes, if that's, if that's the compromise, some development along Heinsberg Road on the east side and largely conservation on the west, particularly where the prime ag soil is.
Okay, I, I guess that, and that, and that sounds great. And I guess, you know, tonight's conversation is kind of bridging the kind of movement between two of the big things that we've been asked to work on, which is the environmental protection standards as well as the PUDs. You know, so that, you know, we're really just talking about both because we have been asked to look at both from the city council. And, you know, I get, there's a comment about where the. And, you know, I get there's a comment about where the prime ag is located and if it's on the east or the west of 116. It looks like Paul, do you want to clarify?
So just to be clear on this, the prime ag soil is where this red outline is, which is on the west side of the road, but the east side of the parcel. So and I think that's what makes this parcel a particularly challenging one because the areas that are both the highest elevation and the prime ag is the area next to the road, which is, you know, normally, one would think build next to the road because that's where infrastructure is. Here, this is this is part of the challenge of of this parcel.
OK. Monica?
Is part of our task with this to then discuss what type of conservation we might recommend for that? Like, is it extension of the the SDQ NRP? Or, I mean, is that part of what we're supposed to be talking about? Or are we at this point just looking at?
I guess if you're ready, if you're ready to recommend one of them, that would be great. But short of that, getting direction about what what areas you would like to see conserved, if any. Remember, we're only talking about areas that are outside of the current draft, Article 10 and 12, and outside of the current NRP. So you're only talking about areas that, under the draft that you had the public hearing on, are buildable. So with those remaining pieces, do you want to? Do you want to, in these different areas, do you want those to be built as neighborhoods? Or sought additional conservation? And if additional conservation, what are the criteria that you're looking to conserve? So what I'm hearing here, for example, is the area that's the prime ag and that happens to be the highest elevation are areas that you would like to really think about not seeing development on.
And then I saw Bernie and then Michael.
So in the beginning, Paul, I thought you kind of said that you would take our overall guidance, which you just got on this one, and that you and Sharon would formulate a recommendation. And I guess I'm OK with that approach. So that's my input on that.
OK.
Yeah.
Michael, you are next. Was that, did you agree with that?
Yeah, so that the parcel is is an NR, except that on the western the western border of this parcel is NRP. So maybe a solution is to expand the NRP to cover the part that we want conserved, which is, let me go back to the map.
Yeah, so I think the 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 current recommendation is that staff might pick the tool or bring back the tool unless unless
My recommendation is we would expand the NRP part of that parcel eastwards towards Heinsberg Road to cover the the important environmental parts of that parcel, wetlands, I guess. And they go down, see, the wetland goes right down the middle. But that that might be a solution, expand the NRP to to protect what we want to protect. It's already partly NRP.
Duncan?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I think we didn't we just talk about letting staff and Sharon make that determination and then come back to us with that recommendation?
Sure, I think that's probably the easiest way of moving forward without having to get feedback from everybody on different tools. So it turns like we have some recommendations, and that is one of the options that they're going to be considering, what Michael suggested.
So just to wrap up, just to wrap up. Go ahead, Michael.
If we're going to have staff evaluate everything that that we've done and consolidated, why don't we just, if that's the the plan, then let's just do that and move on and do something else now.
Well, my suggestion was only that there are different tools to accomplish what you would like to do. And in different cases, it might be expanding the NRP. It might be otherwise, if the commission's ready to be on consensus with these, that's fine. I'm just aware that there's eight of these. And I I just want to make sure that you've had a proper dialogue on all eight and don't get stuck on one or two. But if you're if you're ready to have a specific one, I'm just trying to get as much information as I can to from you as to what you want to do with these areas.
Bernie?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of follow up on both Michael and Paul on that. You know, I I really feel like this discussion is valuable. And I think discussing each of these eight and going through them and at least letting staff hear what everybody has to say. And, you know, I mean, we did come to some kind of consensus on this, which helps to guide staff. So I think it's a worthwhile discussion. Now, there may be some of these where, you know, we all agree instantaneously. And, you know, then that comes a pretty short discussion and pretty direct guidance to the staff. But there's others where we may talk for a little while. And the staff staff may need to kind of sift out what it is we're looking for, so.
OK, Monica?
Just a quick comment on an overall comment I would have then for staff is that, in general, I personally would prefer to see as little changes to any kind of zoning as possible because we have been repeatedly saying that we're not making zoning changes. And if we open up that can of worms, there are many people who want to discuss other zoning changes with us that we've said, we're not doing that during IZ. So I understand in some cases, NRP may be the best. But I'm just putting it out there that, in general, we've been talking about not taking on zoning changes during IZ. And so wherever we can be consistent with that, that would be great when staff considers options.
Hey, so Paul, was that enough feedback on one? It seemed like there was a lot of movement towards the BC area with guidance on the type of area we're interested in.
Yeah, so I guess, just give me one second here. I I guess what I what I got as feedback, not I guess, what I got as feedback is essentially that the area in the east that is the prime ag area, that you would like to prioritize that to be a conservation area. And that the areas that are now, I guess, gray would be eligible to be appropriately designed neighborhoods. Is that what I'm hearing? Do you want to sort of do a straw poll on that as feedback broadly speaking? So I think I saw five.
How big is that gray area?
Well, there's several parcels involved. The parcel that is the main parcel is about 40 acres, I would say, total.
Fifty six.
OK.
Fifty six acres, and the other one is 10, the two that I mentioned anyway. So you've got 66 acres altogether, and that looks like maybe a third of it.
Probably, that that's probably right.
It's 20 acres. Hey, look, there's three or four of you have 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 your thumbs up to allow development in that area and conservation in what what's left to the to the west. I'm not going to, I've expressed my view in the in the homework. I don't have to repeat it.
OK, so I'm seeing four thumbs up and two folks, Paul and Michael, who would like to see more that that greater tilt or complete conservation. Is that an accurate representation?
Yeah, for me, yes. I can't speak for Paul.
OK.
OK, then let's move on to area two. Further south.
OK, area two here involves, there's essentially three or four parcels that are in in play here. There are a couple at the very northern end that have single family homes on them. There's one that's about 10 acres, that's the square that is there. There's one that's about 15 acres that has the steep slopes on it. And then the bottom of the screen that's showing gray is the very northern tip of the Auclair property. It's the portion that was essentially when the council worked with the Vermont Land Trust and the Auclairs to conserve the bulk of the 120 acre parcel. It was that part that was not not part of the conservation portion of it. So keep in mind that that lower portion is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 acres of 120 that the council has worked with NRCS and and others to conserve the remainder of.
And Paul, is the is the Scott property in that block?
No, the Scott property is, let me show you.
The west.
Property is, this is, oops, sorry. Yeah, the Scott property is what I just circled here.
All right.
It's in the NRP and it's city owned already.
Yep.
The, just a reminder, the orange here that I'm circling represents a neighborhood. So that's Cider Mill Two that's been approved and construction is beginning. So that's going to be constructed fully as a neighborhood. The areas that are different colors of green outside of that are conserved in some manner or essentially largely conserved. So
I guess one thing we have had, you know, someone from the Auclairs had come at some point and wanted to make sure that we did not disrupt the agreement that was in place from the the large conservation you were just talking about that the city did. Like, if we would change, you know, kind of have additional conservation required on that parcel after they've already conserved so much, would that kind of kind of reneg on the agreement that was done? I just want to make sure we don't like backtrack on something that the city had kind of agreed.
I would say for certainly for the the remaining sort of 10 acres of 120 to be the there is an update that is being given to council in a next month, or I guess in August from Mont Land Trust about how they're completing the deal in order to sort of make all the parties whole. So that's something to keep in mind, that they had been planning some level of a small neighborhood there. The Auclair person who came was for the 15 acres above that that was left out of the deal. There's a lot of steep slopes in that area that will likely guide a lot of what takes place already. And then there's two, then there's the three other parcels. In terms of your votes, Monica felt that it should be regulated to be built as a neighborhood with the caveats that she provided. Bernie and Jessica felt that it should be a mix of additional conservation in neighborhoods, with Bernie saying that he would prefer that it be a purchase of the city, if not a if not a conservation PUD. And the remaining commissioners felt that it should be principally rural and conservation on these these properties, generally speaking.
Agricultural conservation, not rural.
Yeah, I I mentioned agriculture specifically, and the additional conserved land could be focused on agriculture. Bernie, put your hand up, and then Duncan, then Monica.
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, kind of reiterate what Paul said a little bit. And that I I kind of thought that this was a good for conservation. And, you know, but after listening to the discussion, I would say good for conservation, keeping in mind any, you know, restrictions that might apply. Get that?
Good, sorry, I have I have to I have to jump out every now and then because it's my my grandson's birthday party is ongoing somewhere else on some other Zoom in this house. So I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Mic off, Michael, when you're not talking, that might be helpful.
Say it again?
Could could you mute, Michael, so we can hear Bernie, please?
Oh, no, I said I didn't get it because I was out of the room. But yes, I can mute.
Yes, thank you.
So did you get any of what I said, or? Everybody shaking their head no.
You just repeated Bernie because I got distracted.
OK, can everybody hear me first? OK, good. So this one I identified as primarily conservation. So, you know, I would stick with that. I mean, you know, I I was unaware of where we were on the on previous agreements that we had. So I would just say that, you know, keeping with existing agreements, beyond that, I would I would, you know, try to conserve this to the maximum extent possible. And, you know, preferably, it would be something I would, you know, if the city could buy more, that would be great. If not, then, you know, a conservation PUD or something that conserves as much as possible.
Duncan was next.
Yeah, I would kind of reiterate what Bernie said. I would really like to see this parcel conserve. However, I was not aware, if the Auclairs have the expectation of being able to develop that parcel to some extent, just because of how much land they've concerned already, that I would I would be, I would, I wouldn't feel good about reneging on that if there were some expectations they had about being able to develop that that lower portion of the property. But I would I would like to see this conserved in some facet.
Monica?
Um, Paul, is there from Cider Mill Two, is there currently a road that does cut over to Heinsberg Road?
Yes, so there are. Just one second. So as part of Cider Mill Two, there is a roadway that has been approved and will be built right here. And then that connects essentially over to Cider Mill One over there. Whoops, I'm sorry. Now you can see it. So there's a roadway that's going to be built there. And then as part of this neighborhood, there's a stub to a roadway right here. Doesn't have to be built, but that one is, there's a stub from the southern end of that neighborhood that was approved back when Cider Mill Two was approved in 2008 to, without knowing what was going to be next.
So so when I when I put my thoughts on this one and put it in that A category, it was, well, my worry about it was that this was the only block that did not was not mapped as having sewer and water connectivity, but with Cider Mill there, that surely will then be there. So there will be active water and sewer connectivity through the new neighborhood, correct?
Sewer, yes. Water, it, similar to the last discussion, becomes tricky. Portions of it, for example, the portion that's the the this piece, this parcel here, will probably have some ability to have water. This one here starts to get pretty high, and so might have to be on septic. But again, that's the one, the lower one is the one that's part of the overall agreement with the Vermont Land Trust and Redden Butter Farm folks.
And how about the upper right corner that is the top of the circle?
Yep, those ones there, they're likely pretty high up, as is the parcel in the middle, which is definitely very high up where those where you see that blue. Those are steep slopes, and that's the that's the highest point in the city. I will say that the parcel that has the blue under it, that's the one that's been retained by the Auclair family. The DRB did see a proposal for eight or nine lots, I believe, sort of spread across the top of that on at Sketch Plan. It did not go further at this time. But that's that has been seen as a possible development proposal.
Well, so I know that we have, you know, protections for steep slopes. But it seems to me like really anywhere but it seems to me like really anywhere that you cannot have a water line, that should be considered a slope enough that it should not be buildable. And so that's something that I would say should fit into Articles 10 and 12, thus leaving the areas outside of that to be buildable. So that, that's why I put it in the A category. But again, where you cannot get water because of, you know, an issue with the land, to me, that seems like it should be something that is protected under 10 and 12. If you can't physically get water there, we need to make that something that becomes non-buildable. Otherwise, it will be sprawl and not efficient neighborhood. I don't know if anyone has a thought on that.
Well, Bernie was next, but I do think that our PUD standards do work against sprawl in that we have those standards. So I guess that's the short version. Then Bernie?
Well, I was just gonna say, in, in general, I agree with Monica, except that I think there needs to be a little bit of criteria that goes beyond that. In other words, if somebody is building a single house and they are going to have a well, that's different than if you're going to have, you know, a subdivision with, you know, 50 houses on wells. So, so, you know, in general, I agree that, you know, you don't want to have sprawl and build, you know, a big subdivision with everybody on wells. On the other hand, if it's an individual property owner or, you know, they subdivide and, you know, it's, you know, somebody's two kids and the two kids have a house and they both have wells. I'm, I don't think I'd be opposed to that.
So, go ahead, Michael.
I just wanted to comment, most of the land that is in the northern part of this block belongs to JJ, J and J, the people who are the developers of Cider Mill. And they have plans to, to expand Cider Mill all the way. And they, and they have plans to buy Leo Nado's property, which is in the middle of that as well. So that's 30, 40, that's a good 60 or 70 acres that, south of the, of the, of Larkin's solar farm. So I don't know what, what you want to do, what you guys want to do with that. But I think that's the intention of the person who owns the land. And he plans to buy the other 10 acres from Leo.
Right. So just to be clear on that, Michael, the area that I just striped, that is Cider Mill 2. That is the area that you're speaking about. That has been fully approved and is under construction. So that's, that's.
I guess I'm totally about side of the 3 then.
So you mentioned Leo Nado's property. That's the one right here that I'm drawing the X through.
Yep.
So that's that one. And then, yeah, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, the 30 acre parcel south of that is also belongs to JJ, J, J, south, you know, the Cider Mill developer.
So that's what I already drew in, Michael. Everything that I drew the stripes through is the entirety of Cider Mill. South of that is the Auclaire property.
What's the X?
That's Leo Nado's property. So Cider Mill 2 extends, again, I'll draw it again. Cider Mill 2, everything that JJ owns goes down to here. And they also own a portion that's in the NRP over here, but obviously that's not being built on. South of that is the Auclaire property that is not part of JJJ Cider Mill 2. Or any.
So I guess just to kind of circle back to the homework, you know, which was obviously before our discussion here, there were, there's six of us that are interested in either B or C. So kind of trending towards some additional, at least some additional conservation, you know, possibly with some, some clustered neighborhood. But, you know, it sounds like there's been some additional discussion tonight that we want to additionally make sure that we're not kind of penalizing that piece of land that already gave up or already conserved the, the large amount, would you say 110 acres? Just to make sure we're not, kind of, you know, they already conserved a lot and now we're going to say they have to conserve more. So I, I guess that was part of some of the feedback to me.
Paul, could you just circle that on the map? Where exactly is that area that they, that 10 acres?
Um, so, so the, hang on one second.
It's where you see that little line with a house on it.
Okay, so just zooming out for a second here. The entirety of what was, was part of the conservation agreement is this parcel here. So what I just circled, that's the 110 acres plus also part of the deal was this and this. So those were all part of the deal. That was, that was the whole big shooting match of Auclaire. The approximately 10 acres, and I'm using that number roughly because it hasn't been set in stone, is the gray area at the northern end of this. That's, I sort of marked out the areas that were conserved already on this map to sort of take them out of discussion. So it's this piece here that I just drew the X through.
So just since I, I know I'm the lone wolf on this, but I just wanted to explain this, this thought that, woo.
Sorry about that.
Clearly, the area with the blue, which is the steep slopes, is unbuildable anyway. Whether you want to call it the full lot, I don't, I don't know. But there's a lot of unbuildable, thus conserved land there. But there's going to be access going through directly to Heinsburg Road on that northern parcel. The two, it looks like there's two parcels to the north. So that is going to be active, you know, there's going to be traffic going through there. And so in terms of what's being conserved, you, you're going to have a road through there. And, and so the concept of, and there's going to be development in this lower section because that was part of the terms of the Auclaire agreement. So I guess it's just, I'm looking at the connectivity. I'm looking at the fact that we've added the water, although I'm not sure of those two or those three remaining parcels, which are elevations that are buildable. But that's, I guess I just wanted to, to put that thought out there that we're creating connectivity. There is going to be a road there and it's connected to all that sewer and water that it seems like those certain areas outside of the steep slopes are areas that, it doesn't mean they have to be, but one might have the right to, to develop those parcels. So I might still be alone in that, but that was my thinking.
Well, I think the other six people kind of felt like at least some portion additional conservation. I mean, does anyone else want to kind of move up to the category A?
Yeah, the.
Michael?
Yeah, the Auclaire or Bread and Butter Farm, or whatever you want to call it, that's, that's going to be used for agriculture. So to my mind, it makes sense that the southern, the, the part of this, the southern part of this block that's connected to that conserved area should also be principally agricultural, agricultural or conservation, agriculture and/or conservation. But makes sense to have it agricultural because they're farming just contiguous with it. And then the steep slopes, as Monica says, can't be built anyway. So that's, that's why I'd put that in as regulate to be principally agricultural conservation.
And Duncan?
Yeah, just, Michael, a question for you. Do you know that the Auclaire's are primarily going to use that parcel for agriculture? Is that?
That's the, that's the plan. It belongs to, those, those parcels down there belong to Bread and Butter Farm or the, the, what do you, consortium, if you like.
I guess.
Because there are a few. Yeah.
I'd like to hear from Paul on that, if that is indeed the case, Paul.
So, um, let, let me try to break it down here. So in the remaining piece of what is now owned by Dirt Capital, so it's not owned by the Auclaire family. It was purchased from the Auclaire family. The remaining piece is this trapezoid right here that is sort of left out of conservation at the moment. The agreement that was struck, essentially, there's a delta between how much total funding was available for conservation versus what the acquisition price of the property was. And so this area was, an area on this, on the, on the property of which this is the most logical, was set aside in the agreement to be some number of housing to either be a farm housing or B, be a way in which the delta in the acquisition price can be met. So that's where that comes in. North of that, on the property that has all the steep slopes, that was originally part of the Auclaire property. It was retained by the Auclaire family for similar reasons that the total value of the property, of the whole thing, was not able to be achieved. And so the agreement was that this would be retained by the family. In terms of steep slopes, I think it will guide development. It, it, the, the light blue is not unbuildable. It's billed with caution, the dark blue is unbuildable. I think it's going to be, you know, sort of a tricky thing under the future regulations to do a traditional neighborhood on top of that area because it's just all the, all the slopes and water. They might be able to do something that was more of a conservation PUD or they might be able to do something sort of in the lower part where the barn is today. The, as I said, what they submitted to the DRB was a series of homes sort of over the top here. But that was under the current rules, not under future rules, so.
I would completely support that particular portion being a conservation PUD for sure. I mean, that's, I'm all about adding conservation protection there. And if there's enough buildable for them to have the row of housing and it's that, within that 30%, I would fully support that.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm not 100% sure what, what, how we should move forward. I mean, there were, like I said, it sounds like six of us are still in the B, C category of addition, some additional conservation, maybe some retained, buildable.
So my, my general thought here might be to suggest that, and, you know, I'd want to talk with Sharon, but like, maybe this area here becomes some kind of conservation PUD. Possibly the southern part of this could get credit for all the land that they conserve south of there, the other 105 acres and, and sort of work it together. This area might logically, since it's surrounded by neighborhood on three sides, might logically be neighborhood. And then this area up here, you know, it's two single family homes there. Maybe that's appropriate to either be a conservation PUD or to put those in the NRP and keep them as single family house lots.
Well, but those are, but those two up in the, or north are otherwise buildable, right? There's no.
Well, again, they're high up.
Those are high up?
Yeah.
Um, Bernie, did you, you were saying something?
No, I was just saying that Paul's approach, as he just stated, it sounds like a good starting point.
It sounds like it gets towards the majority of the group's preference for additional conservation in this area. Monica?
I would, I would only ask that in turn, I'm not sure, because you looped in the lower Auclaire. I'm going to call it the Auclaire part still, but you included that lower a lot. But it sounds to me like, I mean, the city has been able to secure and conserve a tremendous amount of land from this family. And what they asked for was that piece to remain. And I really think we need to honor that and not hinder, you know. But to me, then having an isolated area, I mean, if it can connect to the neighborhood next to it, would be ideal and not, not hinder it in terms of what it, what kind of neighborhood it can, can create there. That, I've just asked to honor the intentions of the original deal with the other portion of land.
Okay. And Sandy, Paul actually did describe how they were related to the Bread and Butter Farm agreement. It's just the southern one and the upper one was not.
Well, the upper one was, was, was carved out as part of the agreement to be retained by the family.
Yes. I guess the part of what not Monica said, I think, I think we do want to make sure that we're not messing up that agreement. I think we would generally all agree with that. You know, I'm seeing some heads nodding. You know, they put a lot of effort into it, but I do think in general, the group is feeling like this is an area where some additional conservation could be warranted. Okay. Do you need anything else from us, Paul?
Um, do, can I get sort of thumbs up on what Jessica just said? Thumbs up, thumbs down, just so that, I, I know you've asked to have more things that it's very clear in your, that, that I've got the right direction. So I'm seeing four thumbs up.
Five.
And we've got two thumbs up on it, so I'll, I'll count that as two votes.
Well, Ted voted that way originally as well, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Let's see, where is area three? Area three. So area three is centered largely on Dorset Heights. Before I go too deeply into this one, I did want to note that the seven of the properties in there, and I believe that's all four, five, six, seven, the seven properties that you see that are in gray, they have a covenant with one another that says that I think it's the majority or five of them have to agree in order for any additional development to take place. So in various versions of the conserved versus not conserved, I've sometimes marked this land as being largely conserved because of that agreement, but that has nothing to do with the city's regulations. Currently, as you can see, I think you can see the parcels sort of under here. The eastern parcels go about, go back to about here. And back in 2006, half of those parcels were put into the NRP. The eastern half of those. And that's, each of these has a single family home on them. They're about 10 acres each, except one of them is five acres. So that's what we largely have. The way that the commissioners gave feedback on it. Um, let me get rid of the drawings. This is area three. This was one of the more split ones. So three or four commissioners felt that it should be some level of a mix of additional conservation and neighborhood. Two to three commissioners felt that it should be fully neighborhoods and one commissioner felt that it should be largely conservation here.
Yeah. I, I figured I went for B, but you know, mixed development and conserved, and conserved land, very low density development.
Um, okay, Bernie?
Yeah, I kind of rated this one as, as more developable. It's between two other developments. So, you know, kind of my contiguous criteria kind of placed this one as one to just, you know, explain, expand from either side into the middle. So that's kind of where I was at.
Yeah, and I guess I agree with, with kind of what Bernie and Michael were saying. But, you know, one of the things that I did was turn on the village residential zoning area, which covered part of this. So I felt a little differently about the different areas because kind of the. because kind of the eastern part where it butted up against the habitat block is already zoned at kind of a lower res, lower density. So it seemed like if we could expand that habitat block to be wider, but still retained kind of a neighborhood feel on the western part, it's both kind of bumping up the habitat block as well as kind of retaining some of the existing expectations, so.
So Jessica, you were sort of thinking that maybe this area roughly could be a future neighborhood? Um, but that other areas further to the east, maybe the, something like the NRP being taken further over here um, and allowing for maybe a little bit of infill where the homes are already placed or something like that?
Yeah, I guess that's what I was thinking. You know, it would really add to the width of the habitat block there, but kind of keep the development, kind of like what Bernie said, keep the development over between the other neighborhoods. Um, Michael and then Monica?
Yeah, I, I don't see that the um, habitat blocks impinge on that block three at all.
Isn't that green? Is that just NRP? Well, then I guess I was, yeah, then I was advocating for widening the NRP is what I was getting at.
Right, that, that's, that's part of one of the original 2004 Arrowood Habitat, we'll call it a corridor in this case. Hence the NRP being there.
And then I think Monica was next.
So I mean, if the Arrowood report did mark more habitat block into that area, and I, I guess I'd still be falling in where I am because I believe so strongly in the additional protections that we have added in Articles 10 and 12. Um, I think that the other thing that especially now learning about this uh, this covenant, you know, I'm looking at the zoning allowable as being an option that those landowners have a tremendous amount of control over. Um, because of the agreement they have now, how might, that might be undone, I, I, whatever, I don't know. But those landowners have an incredible amount of ability to protect that land as it is and they may choose to do so forever. Um, but the underlying zoning to me seems like it, the rule, you know, following the, the concept of there's, the things that are protected from Articles 10 and 12 and the NRP will stand. And the other area is acceptable and safe for building. And the zone should, you know, the allowable should reflect that. If those owners with their covenant choose to never act on that, that's completely fine. But there's, that land is otherwise buildable land. And um, so those concerned, those wanting it to be conserved, it, with that covenant, it probably has some of the best protection in the city already. But I, I don't think the zoning should um, you know, I don't think we should add protections to it if, if it's not follow, because there's other places we could just say, oh, well, we like to extend the habitat block over there too. Um, and I, that's where you want, to me, it's a can of worms. And if we're going to do that or if we're going to extend the NRP there, there's a lot of other areas that we can talk about doing that too. And I'm looking at the land like there's nothing else there that's asking to be preserved, so.
Okay, well, a few of us fell into the neighborhood, you know, having this area be available for the neighborhoods. And a few fell into the category of um, kind of a mix, like a conservation PUD approach or, or um, you know, clustered development. Duncan, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I was thinking along the lines of similar to what you thought, Jessica, you know, that front area. I, if it was going to be developed, I'd like something like either a conservation PUD or traditional neighborhood closer to the road. Um, you know, and again, staying with that theme, trying, trying to keep the, the land further away from the road, more conserved.
Uh, when you say the road in this instance Duncan, do you mean Dorset Street?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So possibly allowing neighborhood in this area?
That's, that's, when I looked at that parcel, that's what I was thinking.
And, and this down here, that kind of thing?
Okay, well, it, it sounds like, I mean, just looking at the kind of votes, it sound, it looks like that's kind of the um, general approach of the, the full neighborhoods kind of on the west part, but maybe um, oh, before I say anything else, Michael and then Bernie?
Yeah, I, I just want to locate myself. Is this um, the larger parcel, is that the one that, where it's the Schoolhouse Learning Center?
No, uh, this is further north, so let me orient you here. Um, where I'm drawing the highlighter here, that's the mill market, that's the mill market in Delhi there. This here is the entrance to cider mill. And uh, this is Dorset Heights slash Nolan Farm Road up here. So our old crossroad slash Nolan Farm Road. So you're talking about south of the golf course and north of the mill market in the area where a few years ago Link Road was built, uh, Goldenrod Road. And then there's these, most of the homes face onto Dorset Heights, which is back in here.
Okay, so it's not where Midland Avenue is?
No, you're, it's well north of that. This is over at Nolan Farm Road.
Okay.
Okay, and then we had Bernie and then Monica?
Yeah, I mean, um, you kind of drew Paul um, just on the left there, but I mean, I, I kind of envisioned that you would just extend the um, the subdivision kind of right down the middle. More. So you've got the main road that goes through there. So if you kind of draw a line from the, the yellow corner up towards the top, straight down to the yellow corner, no, um.
Yeah, I'm going to make it easier for you. Bernie, you should be able to draw now.
Really?
Yeah, there's a little tool that should look like a, a little paintbrush or something.
A kid in a candy store.
Where is that?
Hmm, it possibly along the top screen for you?
For mine, it's on the right. Do you want me to draw what you were saying, Bernie?
Oh wait, yeah, I see it, nevermind. I think I see it. So I would, I would go. Why didn't it? Pen, how's that? There we go, I think I got it. Well, it's not, so can you see my line?
Not yet, but sometimes it takes a second.
Do I need to hold down a button or anything?
Hmm, oh yeah, there we go. We, I see a purple line starting to make its way down.
Okay, so there, there we go.
Yeah, I think that's what I was originally proposing. Like everything to the west of that line could be neighborhoods and then conserve the east side of that line.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, my thought was you've kind of got a road down the middle and the lower part has two roads that kind of dead end. I would just extend the, the road on the bottom one up to connect to the road on the top one and just fill out that middle area as, as traditional neighborhood.
So you're saying essentially make this a traditional neighborhood in there?
Yep.
And then have the stuff to the east of that become more conservation? What do you want to do along Dorset Street where you've got Link Road that kind of does this?
Yeah, you had originally shown some additional development there. I guess um, I could see additional development there too.
Yes, what Duncan was saying.
Right, that was what you presented to Duncan and, and I was, I was okay with that. I just um, would add what you just drew in for me.
So I think what I'm hearing from Bernie is basically, in the end, what this would do would be to add this box to the NRP. Or something like it, and then the rest is allowed to be neighborhoods. Obviously, you know, any natural resources, um, where the blue is would not be allowed to be anything, but.
Right, anything we currently regulate would not be in there, but beyond that, yes.
So are you suggesting Paul to, you know, the, the eastern part of those long lots are already in, in the NRP? You're suggesting expand the NRP westwards?
Uh, I think that that's, that could reasonably happen. If that's, if that was a goal to um, expand that corridor, then you could choose to, to do that. Add that to the NRP essentially behind the line of where the homes are.
Yeah, that would work.
Um, Monica?
So that feels extremely subjective to me. Um, the current landowners have protection that they can honor. There is nothing within that yellow area that's been marked that is indicated as a, any form of our Articles 10 and 12. We are making a, I mean, I know this is what we do, this is our, this is part of our job. But there are other areas in the city that have other re, natural resources or potential resources on them where we could expand the NRP. And if we're going to expand it there, we need to open up this conversation. There, there's nothing, in fact, where we put that line, we're not even including what's marked in here as ag soil. We're protecting, we're, we're adding protection on the land that doesn't have a resource, yet we're ignoring the, the red area there and making it a, it just doesn't feel consistent to me and I worry about that. That feels, it, it doesn't feel strategic. Um, I, I have a concern with that. We, we've made some, um, all of our habitat blocks are based on what Arrowood's told us and our decision to do it, period. We put a stake in the ground and we said, we're protecting this and I firmly stand by that. But to me, this, what we're talking about right now in three, sounds very subjective to me. And I just, I, I know I might be alone in that, but, but I, I, I worry about that. I, I don't think that that's a fair thing to do.
Yeah, Monica, you might not be completely alone. I mean, when you look at the table that Paul sent, I mean, this is one of the few areas, one of the two areas where almost all of us were kind of hovering in the neighborhood area of the table. So, I mean, Duncan?
I guess that area with Monica, I would, I, I don't necessarily want to see a ton of development in those lots in the back on the east side. I'd like to see the development towards Dorset Street on the west side. But I do agree with her, that just expanding the NRP there seems kind of arbitrary. But I, I would agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, I mean, this does seem like one of the two areas where we all felt like neighborhoods were acceptable. I mean, it, it is true, Monica, there's no, there's no basis for, no scientific or habitat basis for just adding, changing that zoning there.
I think that, um, you know, if I can interject here, I think this is one of the areas where, um, as you think, Sharon has talked with you about thresholds for PUDs. And this might be one of the areas where um, thinking about what options could a landowner have here? Um, you know, I, I'm getting the sense that, you know, if somebody wanted to do some, I'm going to call it infill, even though it's not really infill, um, on, on, you know, five or 10 acres here, that it might not be an all or nothing that's allowed by the city in an instance like this, that um, that you might, you know, be wanting to create an option where if somebody wanted to add two or three homes to one of these properties and not necessarily 20 to one of these properties, that that might be palatable to you, but you know, what are your thoughts on that?
Can you tell me how it's zoned right now? Is it R4 or R1?
It's, it's neigh, it's neighborhood residential, which is R4. So that means that today, in theory, again, you know, we're, we're talking in, in, in theory, take this parcel. Um, it's about 10 acres in size. In theory, under the current regulations, that could be 40 homes. The homes would all have to go in the neighborhood portion of it. Um, realistically, it wouldn't be able to achieve that, but it would still be pretty intense. And, you know, I think what we've seen practically speaking is in circumstances like that, you've seen more like what's being built, what was built here. Um, and in fact, that area is in the village commercial where it could have, sorry, village residential, where it could have been eight homes per acre. In the end, what you got on five acres there was 11 homes. Or nine homes, excuse me. And that was part of the struggle of why you went into PUDs to begin with of, you know, is that acceptable as a landform? It's pretty low density. Um, and so it winds up being a little bit of the, the worst of both scenarios. But that's, that's kind of what you were wrestling with at the beginning of what to do with properties like this.
So what, what I would add, based on what you just said there, I mean, I would remind people that the covenant itself will provide more protection for that land in the long term than any zoning book because the zoning can always be evolved, right? A covenant is between those particular landowners. And if you think about it logically, if one landowner is able to persuade their neighbors that they want to build 40 on their parcel, there's some kind of change in the air. And I would imagine the neighboring parcels would probably be moving towards doing the same. And maybe that's not now, maybe that's in 50 years. But when we look at that land, we may think, oh, that doesn't, that wouldn't be pretty there. But they may very well have a good reason to do that eventually if all of those parcels agree. So again, my point is it's currently zoned as an R4 and the landowners are controlling that. And I see a reason to change that zoning.
Okay, Bernie?
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, so it's R4, you know, I kind of stand by my original recommendation that we sketched out a few minutes ago. But in terms of, um, you know, Monica's, I guess, placing stock and what the landowners would do, I don't place as much stock in that, Monica, I guess, as, as you probably do. I mean, it's only four people and, you know, I don't know how old they are or, you know, what their kids think, but um, I definitely don't place that as um, a high level of protection, I guess. So um, I wouldn't personally place a lot of stock in the fact that four of the landowners happen to have a covenant and agree. But having said that, I think, you know, keeping it, you know, R4 and doing what we sketched out is, is fine.
Duncan?
Yeah, Paul? Paul, did you? Yeah, no, can you hear me? Yeah. Paul, did you say, maybe I misunderstood, you were talking about the threshold for PUD. If somebody in one of those western lots came in and said, hey, I want to put six houses in here. Is that what you're talking about, something on a small scale like that?
Yeah, or maybe three houses or something like that. I think that that's one of the areas that um, has been a little bit of a, a challenging point for you all is um, as you've sort of been discussing, that four acres is a threshold for a PUD. If they reach that, then they must meet a minimum density. Um, and you know, the, the, the idea of that works very well on a large property. The question that I, you know, I think you've wrestled with a little bit is what happens when it's a somewhat smaller property? You know, and that's where, you know, when Sharon has talked about, you know, what's the best fit in a, in that four to 10 acre range, these are sort of classic versions of that. Of, you know, Highland Terrace would be another place of that same question of, you know, is that um, do you want us, does that get treated the same as a larger property where they can build a full neighborhood on their own? Or that they can do it sort of incrementally here and that you, that you have minimums or not? I guess is sort of fundamentally the question.
Would that be addressed with an infill PUD?
Potentially, I think that that's what Sharon was kind of thinking of, of what does it mean when it's a smaller one? And are there some relaxations in some of the standards about what, what it means? So that it's not quite as uh, jarring between individual properties?
Um, Michael and then Monica?
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering why we're hypothesizing about what a landowner might want to do and how old he is. and how old he is and when she's going to die and what will happen then. What's that got to do with us? We've already had somebody who lives there on Highland Terrace came before the commission and complained about, about the development and not development per se, but that it was out of, out of character with, with the neighborhood. These four parcels are about 45 acres. They're close, what, they border on, or do they border on? Yeah, some of them border on the Winuski Valley Park District, which is another 42 or 43 acres, just, so. Just leave it, leave it the way it is. Let's not try and find, try and suss out what these landowners might want to do. You gave us a choice, Paul, of A, B, and C. Some of us chose B for this, and some of us chose a hybrid. Leave it, leave it like that. Let's not waste that, waste our time and energy on it. Of course, I would, being, being environmental, an environmentalist and being conscious of the fact that we're going up in flames in large part of the country, I'd rather keep this, these lands as open as possible. Things go on the way they are in California, half our food is not going to be available to us, we'll have to grow it here. Those aren't issues that concern the planning commission, but they should, and they concern me. That's why I put in there, regulate as a mix of additional conservation and neighborhood, low density. Let's move on.
Bernie, and then we can take a straw poll.
So I, I'm with Michael on trying to move along. I mean, we're only on number three out of eight, so at some point we need to decide if we're going to try to get through all eight or not. But, you know, I think, you know, some mechanism to kind of expedite our way through this and, and, you know, have a focused discussion around the, you know, how we, how we voted on each of these. Might be productive if we're going to hope to get through it.
Okay, well, it sounds like what I'm hearing is the, most of this area could be good for neighborhoods. The what more western portion, full neighborhoods with potentially some additional conservation in the yellow area, kind of the back part of the properties on the eastern part that Paul just highlighted. With some mechanism, because we said staff was going to come back with a wave specifically. So who would be in favor of that? So me, Michael, Duncan, Bernie, okay, so that's four of us. So well, so that was a, enough to move that forward. Okay, area four.
So area four consists of four or five parcels largely south of Nolan Farm Road down to the Dorset Farms neighborhood. The northern two of these, more or less, were part of the Dorset Meadows application that has not proceeded. There are a couple of additional parcels in here that you can see, sort of one in the top left-hand corner that's got a single family home on it, and one in the sort of bottom right that's a rectangle that is almost entirely covered in natural resources. So this is sort of the, the, the big swath of properties in the center here. The feedback that was provided, this is area four, three or four commissioners talked about this being principally rural and conservation. Two to three commissioners talked about it being a mix of additional conservation beyond what's already protected and, and neighborhood areas. And one commissioner suggested that this should all be, all, all the areas that are not under the draft protected should be able to be built upon.
Should be able to be what?
Be, be, become neighborhoods. That was one.
With an asterisk. So, I mean, I guess considering, and let's go back to the map, but, you know, it seems like six of us are leaning towards additional conservation beyond what is already conserved, you know? And multiple people mentioned the Conservation PUD is a potential tool. And I know I mentioned possibly additional buffer to the Great Swamp, like if areas were specifically called out.
Yeah, I think what's tricky about these properties, you can see it right here, is that the areas that are not, the areas of the primary natural resources are on either side of it, which is the Great Swamp on the west, the left-hand side of your page, and a, a stream corridor through the right hand, which is also then closest to Dorset Street, and you wind up with a swath down the middle. That each of the properties has a driveway that gets up to a house today, and so that, you know, potentially could be upgraded to roadway. The northernmost one has an access point on where they could reach Dorset, Nolan Farm Road, and the southernmost one could theoretically access through, through the Dorset Farms neighborhood. There's a stub at the very bottom, you can just barely see it on the screen there.
The southernmost, yeah, the southernmost one, Paul, which is Noah Hyman, has a right of way through the rectangular piece on Dorset Street. I believe that belongs to the Yorni family, so he's already got a right of way. So, and there's a driveway in there, and then there's a driveway in the middle one. But in the northern one,
Right, so there's. There's driveways like this, and then this one, the northernmost one does not have a driveway, but it touches directly onto Nolan Farm Road.
Yeah, yeah. And those three lots plus the one that you, the little square one, that's just east of, of Underwood. There, that's about 110 acres. And some of it is, yeah, yeah. That's, a lot of it is, well, some of it is grassland, and used to be hay. But now it's mostly grassland, so.
So, I mean, it's considering we have six, six of us kind of distributed between the B and C categories of a mix of additional conservation and neighborhood or principally conservation. Like it, it feels like we're already all kind of converging in that, that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, Paul, do you think that that's enough for you and Sharon to kind of work with? Or do you, I mean, I know that this is hard, because you said there's, there's resources on both sides.
I guess I'd love to hear if I could, only because this one is sort of, this is the largest block of all of them. I think I'd love to hear a little bit more from commissioners. Jessica, you had described that, you know, what would be important to you would be further buffer of the Great Swamp. Some folks, you know, would like to see this, I think, entirely become the NRP. We know that the northern two properties here, through a private covenant at this time, have a limited number of homes, but that's not really your responsibility. Only to the extent that, you know, they'll have, even if they only do the limited number of homes, they'll need to fit within your regulations. So I, I guess I'd love to get a little more thought on this one, just because it's such a large block.
Okay, so I see Bernie and then Monica and then Michael.
So I'm kind of in the camp of conserve to the maximum extent practical. I mean, I could see maybe a Conservation PUD there, but I wouldn't go anything beyond that.
Monica?
I would just hope that we do not see sprawl of McMansions. I mean, that to me is so detrimental to the environment. One house, you know, with 10 bedrooms and 10 bathrooms, there's so much better we can do for our society. So I would just hope that whatever is built there is not creating harmful huge houses that are not inviting to a broad spectrum of our city and community. And that really would be sprawl.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, next to Edland, this is probably the most important block of land in South Burlington from a, from a conservation and environmental point of view. And I've walked around there quite a bit. And I would ask that, as we, as some of us have walked the long property, I think commissioners should have a look at these three lots, walk around them to get a sense of how important and how beautiful they are. I mean, this is really quite spectacular landscape, and I would encourage you to have a look. Just look at it in, in terms of what it looks like now and the fact that it's contiguous with the most important habitat block that we've got, the Great Swamp. I really, I really think you should walk it. It's important. And, and I've, you know, I've, I've said regulated it as rural and conservation more with, and Bernie has the same view with some caveats, but it is really spectacular and worth saying.
Okay, Duncan?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Michael. It's a fabulous piece of property. My big concern was trying to extend the border of the Great Swamp, just because that's such a, one of our most valuable ecological areas of the city. And then when you do that, you look at the, you know, the water buffer on the, the wetland buffer on the right side, there's, it just doesn't, there's not a lot of land to squeeze, develop them in there. It just doesn't make sense in that piece. So, yeah, I, I would, I would like to see this conserved to the maximum extent possible.
So it's five, you know, five or six of us are now in the C, conserve as much as practical. I mean, the, I think, the reason I say five or six is I'm, I want to make sure we're not doing like a taking or just saying it's completely undevelopable, or, you know, maybe taking the approach that maybe the city needs to invest in some of these. But I think, you know, whatever we could do to conserve as much as possible, I think I would agree with too. It sounds like there's a lot of convergence around that. Duncan, did you want to follow up?
Actually, you raised a really good point, Jessica. As much as I would love to see it conserved, I, I'm not thrilled about doing it completely in a regulatory manner and just taking that land. Again, this is where, Paul, you would, hopefully, what other options are available? You know, with the Open Space Fund, or what could the city do other than just a regulatory downward taking?
And, and maybe this is a place where our Conservation PUD tool makes, makes sense. I mean, there are resources on both sides. I know a few of us mentioned the Great Swamp, but, you know, I think that's one of the tools we've talked about to, to make sure that someone's able to retain some value. Michael?
Duncan mentioned expanding the Great Swamp into these parcels. You know, talk to the landowners. They might tell you to take a hike and bring out a shotgun and tell you to get off their property, but they might also say, that's an interesting idea, we'll think about it. I like the idea to expand the habitat block wherever we can, and it may not be such a dumb idea, but you'd have to talk, we'd have to talk to these people.
Okay, we have a public comment from Andrew Chalmak. Sounds very similar to some of the things Michael was saying about visiting the parcel. "The meadows are abuzz with pollinators, birds, and wildflowers. There's a ton of wildlife on the meadows." Okay, I'm, I guess I'm not sure, Paul, without, you know, what the approach is. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of convergence around preserving additional resources in this area.
Right, so I guess what, what I'm hearing is that through one mechanism or another, whether it's regulatory or it's acquisition, am I hearing that what commissioners would like to see is that the bulk of what's in number four be, you know, essentially functionally like, like an NRP? That there be, you know, if you've got more than 15 acres and less than 100 acres, there can be three homes on it? And that it's a design and a conservation. Is that what I'm hearing? And I'm not, I'm trying to sort of stay away from zoning versus not zoning, but an outcome. Is, is that what I'm hearing that you would like, when you say mostly conservation, do you mean rural to that extent, agricultural to that extent? Or do you mean something like if each property had five or 10 homes on it and they were clustered, that that would be acceptable? Because I think that, you know, there's sort of a breakpoint of different subjects there, or maybe that's something to further flesh out.
Bernie?
So I would place myself in, in your first category there, Paul, where, you know, the maximum practical. I would entertain a Conservation PUD, but prefer, you know, optimally, the city would buy it all, but in lieu of that, conservation, second choice, and Conservation PUD, third choice.
All right, Michael, go ahead.
Yes, I, I like Paul's idea of a sort of NRP type of situation or circumstance for, for this block, for these, these parcels. I mean, if, if they were already zoned NRP, we wouldn't be talking about it. But.
Monica?
So mathematically, Paul, if these were Conservation PUDs and the 30% is of the buildable, the problem is that there's four parcels in there, really, that are, well, maybe five. There isn't a way, if each of them are deemed conservation only, there, we don't have the opportunity to connect. Like we don't have, we don't have a way to require that they connect to each other. I, I guess I'm, I'm struggling to understand how, how Conservation PUDs would work in this case, given the access to the land, because you kind of, if anything's going to be built, it needs to kind of connect. Well, I guess not. They each have their, I need help understanding the math on the Conservation PUDs. What might that look like on these parcels?
Well, so there's different ways that you could calculate it. Typically, you would include, you would exclude the area that is in the NRP, but then you would include all the other resources. But, you know, this is, you, you're making this from the ground up, so, you know, there's no, there's no greater rule that says it has to be this. I think that's why I've been trying to have this conversation tonight be about outcomes rather than tools. But I think you're bringing up an interesting challenge here, that let's say there were eight homes on each property, just to, just to go with round numbers. How are those eight homes accessed? Because they're sort of in the middle, so, you know, it's, it's, you could imagine it on the northernmost property, and then you get to the second one, and would that either need to be a, an upgraded roadway from Dorset Street or a long road from the northern one that has, you know, that's varying infrastructure heavy for eight homes? You know, that's, that's where this becomes sort of challenging, and why typically you either go in one direction of full neighborhoods where you can sort of justify, where, where the infrastructure is, is able to be carried long-term, or the other direction. I guess what you would wind up if you had something like the eight homes is you wind up with something more or less kind of like what we were just talking about in, in area three. Not necessarily ownership-wise, but in terms of amount of roadway to, to homes over on Dorset Heights, and that's, that can be challenging.
And then, Michael? Any, Michael?
Yeah, you know, I mentioned that I've, I've walked around these properties and I've met three of the four owners. And they've all said they, they are quite interested and expressed a strong interest and desire to conserve. But they would like, you know, they'd like the, the city to facilitate that. They'd like to, you know, they can't do it on their own. They'd like to talk to the city about how, ways and means in which they can conserve their land without losing its value, if you like, or all its value. It's something that they've expressed and it's something we should take into account.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a lot of interest in conservation through some kind of outside organization in the city. But, I mean, I guess I feel like we do need to retain some kind of value, which similar to, at least similar to what we do in the NRP, where you'd have a few homes. And I think any homes that do get built should be clustered, so we don't have them spread out over a large area like the area in number three where it was 10 acres per home. I just, I feel like you're not really meeting conservation goals or habitat goals if you're kind of spreading out over a big, long, big lawn areas. So I think any buildings that you go should, I think, be clustered.
Monica?
So back to the math on that, because that, that's what I've been struggling with. I mean, my, part of my asterisk is that whatever building does occur, I am opposed to any kind of new cut through a wetland or habitat block. If there's an, if there's an existing driveway, okay, but no new cut throughs. And, I mean, I, I'm just going to put this out there, that if we turn this into a conservation PUD, what would be interesting is to explore creating the safest path on the official map of a potential road that, that connects through, that ensures that it's not harming any of the resources around it. I'm not saying that it has to go in just because it's on the map, but that way, it, there is a logical safe path, so that let's say the person on the third lowest, you know, wants to build their 30%, and it's, and we ask that it be this clustered development, that we are assured that there is safe passage without harming the resources around it.
Okay, I guess, does anyone feel differently or want larger amounts of development here? I mean, it sounds like we're really moving towards something more rural here than anywhere else that we've talked about.
I, I continue to be in the camp of if it's buildable, I would rather see, you know, we talked a long time ago about limiting unit size and we haven't addressed that. I'm very much opposed to this turning into McMansion sprawl. And I'll say it over and over again. So I don't know if that means conservation PUD or if it means TND, but if anything is built, I feel strongly that it, it be more of our, of a neighborhood size, whether it's the 30% or more. So, so I would take myself out of the rural, but I'm not taking myself completely out of the conservation, if that's fair to say.
Okay. Michael?
It's my understanding that on two of these lots, you can only build five homes, whether they're small or big, doesn't matter.
I think it's nine, Michael, but.
That's what I said, nine.
Oh, I thought you said five, I'm sorry.
Nine, nine on each of the, the northern one and the middle one.
Okay.
I think we've got as far as we can get on this.
I mean, Paul, that feels like we're, I mean, is that enough to go by?
I think that's good for now, thank you.
Okay, then let's move to area five, which is right now kind of the village area.
Right, so this area is essentially, it's zoned currently as either village, commercial or village residential, which allows today for up to eight housing units per acre. You really haven't seen anything near that density taking place, but you are seeing bits of it getting built. So you've seen Sadie Lane at the bottom there, that's where those lots are. There's, on the, to the right of that is, I forgot the name of it, but, sorry, to the left of it is a little neighborhood that's gone in. There's Golden Rod at the top. Commissioners felt on this one, this is area five, the four, four commissioners indicated that this would be a good spot to have full neighborhoods in the areas that are allowable to be built upon. A couple of commissioners talked about a hybrid and two to three, for portions of it on the west side, talked about principally conservation. So the preponderance in this one seemed to be that this might be an appropriate area so long as the elements of Article 10 and 12 are protected to allow for this to become a neighborhood and to be sort of a focal point of the southeast quadrant, which it has, that's been the plan up, up till now.
Okay, since we do have, I guess a majority of us in that, that neighborhood category, any additional discussion or do we want to take a straw poll on, or I guess we already?
Well, I had a mixed view of, of, you know, some of it, yes, and some of it, you know, west of Dorset, I was in favor of sea, which is principally conservation, except for the, the only property that's right on Dorset Street, along, all the way along, which could be, could be developed for residential development. And on the east side of the, in this block on the east side of Dorset, could be mixed, mixed development.
Okay, so it sounds like the majority is in neighborhoods in the whole area, but Michael's making the case for on the east side having more conservation.
On the west side.
Oh, yeah, on the west side, sorry, on the west side, having more conservation. I mean, I guess I feel like that's right along that road, it would be right across from development. We just talked about so much more conservation behind there. I guess I would still stay in the camp of, you know, just that one area, having both sides of the road and still have neighborhood. Two others generally feel that way too. So we had had four of us for neighbor, both sides of the road. Monica, would you still be in that category? Okay, so that, that is four of us for neighborhoods in this, this area. So I think we can probably move on. So six looks like it's maybe a bigger discussion.
I don't know that six needs to be a really long discussion, because I think once you parse it out, so this is area that is in the currently zoned SEQ Neighborhood Residential Transition, which is this peculiar district that allows for areas to be either sending areas or receiving areas in the zoning. And so, you know, what, what you have here is some properties that have been built upon. So this has been built here. This one has been built right there and there's an application right up here.
You can't see the lines.
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep forgetting that I paused it. So I circled areas that are built upon. On this northern property, most of the rest of it has proved to be wetlands. That's why there's really just those two little circles. Further south, this property here is either NRP or it's part of the association land, sorry, the, the offset for the construction of Dorset Farms, and it's got an Act 250 restriction on it already. This is NRP. This is association land for Dorset Farms. So you're really just talking about a handful of properties up above. And then these, then these sort of small, single family homes down further to the south that are sort of in this NRT district. So you're talking about a handful of properties that probably could be neighborhoods on the ones that are remaining, because they're up against what you already designate as a neighborhood. That said, I should say it where everybody landed. I'm sorry, I should have started with that. This is area six. There was a lot of split thoughts on this, and I think that's because the district has so many different things in it. So two to, two to three commissioners felt that it should be neighborhoods. Two to three commissioners felt that it should be a mix clustering near, clustering any new development that is next to the road. And two to three commissioners felt that it should be principally conservation. So, and I think, as I said, that sort of reflects that it's a lot of different things in one red circle.
Okay, Bernie, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so it's, it sounds like it's mostly conservation already. So, you know, the northwest corner there is kind of contiguous to five. And, you know, certainly could be applicable to, you know, extend a, you know, a neighborhood. And I think, you know, the rest of it seems like it's, you know, either, you know, protected through one mechanism or another. So, you know, I'm not as concerned about those areas. So I, I guess I would focus on kind of the northwest corner as allowing, you know, expansion to the south and then everything else, you know, just protected through the way it's already protected.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would agree with that. I know, because I was really talking about having the neighborhoods in those areas as well. And that is currently, at least the, the northern part is currently the Village Residential. You know, so there's a lot of vetting of, of that, you know, over the years.
Yeah.
Can we move forward? Because I think we're good, I'm sorry. We have two more and it's 9:30, I'm going to fall asleep.
Okay, so it sounds like neighborhoods in the, Michael?
Would make sense, east of Dorset would be principally conservation and west of Dorset would be principally development.
Yeah, I think Bernie was saying there's so many resources already on those properties that you're, you just mentioned, that, you know, in the small amount of remaining land, there could be some neighborhoods in those areas. So I think that's, that's why Bernie didn't break it out, because he felt like there were a lot of resources kind of in those areas.
Yeah, because I think I heard Paul say that the southwest corner was, was protected because it was association land or something. So what I got out of it was essentially everything's already protected except for the northwest corner. And I agree with Monica that, let's take a vote and move on to the next one.
Okay. So I was hearing neighborhoods in the remaining areas. I'm seeing three, or Monica, you had already voted for that. Michael, okay, so neighborhoods in the remaining areas. So moving on.
Six down, two to go.
Bernie remembers me being cranky when I was tired. He doesn't want to see that again.
So this one is essentially, you know, we're really just talking about a couple of parcels here that you've previously talked about at your last meeting. Everything else in this area is either built as South Point or South Village or is Underwood Property. So you're really just talking about the one parcel. What I heard at the last meeting was that, that there was interest in retaining the resources to the east of the planned roadway, which is right here, and allowing for some level of neighborhood to the west of that.
That is what we talked about. And it looks like our homework kind of agrees with that, with six, six of us leaning towards either a full neighborhood or some conservation there. So Bernie, so it looks like maybe going with the, the neighborhood and the remaining, like that front part along the road, the buildable area. So I would vote for that.
That's like a B?
Well, the B, well, the whole back part is all resources.
Right, but the other part. So I made it, my comment was low density, because that's where, it's in the low density part of our land use map. Okay.
Yeah, so neighborhood in the, so category A.
For that portion of it, but then everything east of the road to be, to be, to be conserved in some manner.
Yes, yes. I'm seeing four nods, I think Michael said yes, so five, yes, we'll move forward with that.
All right, one to go then. So this is up in the north, northwest corner of the southeast quadrant. So there's really, we're really talking about two parcels in here. Though it looks like there's a fair open area this year that is orange, this is the Spear Meadows neighborhood, which has been fully approved and adjudicated. This down here is going to be a dedicated city park. So that's not part of the discussion. That was part of the Spear Meadows. So we're really talking about the areas sort of up along, at the corner of Swift and Spear. And there's sort of one medium sized parcel that's kind of in the middle there. Commissioners, sorry, I have to switch my tool. This is area eight. Commissioners were, three commissioners felt that this should be neighborhoods, two commissioners felt that it could be a mix with clustering near existing development or roadways, and two commissioners felt that it should be principally conserved.
I didn't say not conserve, but it's currently used for agriculture and should remain that way. So regulate for agricultural conservation.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's what I meant, Michael.
Just a quick question, Paul, that top parcel, isn't that UVM?
Yes, that is a UVM parcel. It's one of the, it's one of the UVM parcels that is not zoned as agriculture, it's zoned as the rest of the southeast quadrant, which is neighborhood residential.
Yeah, that's R4.
So, and, and just to sort of circle back to the very beginning of this conversation, I imagine that without putting words in UVM's mouth, discussing sort of all of their properties in the context of what, what do, what does the city and what does the university want to see happen across the board? That's kind of the bigger picture conversation they want to have about all their properties, regardless of the zoning that it currently has. So one option for you could be to, you know, retain it as it is essentially today, which is to allow for a neighborhood and then sort of have that dialogue at a later time when you come back to having the bigger picture conversation with UVM.
You're talking about the parcel north of Swift?
No, I'm talking about this one here.
It's south.
The 10 acres on the corner of Swift?
Correct.
I thought that was not neighborhood, that's IA.
No, that one is the one that is, that is neighborhood residential. The other ones are IA. This one over here is IA. And up, up higher up there is IA.
Yep.
So, you know, perhaps if what you want to have is a, is a thorough dialogue with UVM overall, then that's something that you could do as a, whenever you choose to have that conversation. And then as for the rest of the parcels, I think it's sort of the same question that you had on Highland Terrace and on Dorset Heights, which is you get these sort of three, four acre parcels, and what kind of infill do you want to see on those? And so I think that's a good question to have with Sharon about what do you do when the infill is really only at that small scale, to have it fit in with what's next to it. So maybe for this one, you've got your answers for now.
Okay, with, with a discussion with Karen, with Sharon about what that looks like.
Right, and then with UVM, when you choose to have the dialogue about all the property that they have.
Does that seem like a good approach before we? Does that seem like a good approach before we preemptively pick something? Yeah, I think, I think that seems good. I'm seeing, so at least thumbs up on that approach.
So, that concludes them. What I think I'd like to do, commit, I, I'm going to try to sort of write up some brief notes on, on all of this. So that the council sees where you're at. I'll be happy to share their agenda with you as soon as it's published, so that you can participate. Jessica, I think you said that you would be able to attend. But I'm, I'm sure that this will be very helpful to the council, that you've had this conversation. So that, you know. So that they can do sort of a gut check on whether they're on the same page as what you just discussed, or if they, you know, have a very different viewpoint, in which case we'll be sure to bring it back. But, you know, these are. Important discussions, and this is not an easy one, so I really appreciate your efforts in this.
Michael, you have something?
Yes, well, Paul had also asked for our input on two. Two. Groups of ideas, you know, one A, B, C, and two A and B. One was for largely unbuilt, excuse me, unbuilt land that is presently described as buildable in the draft regulations. Ie not in the SEQ NRP and not hazard level one, a hazard or level one resource in the draft. Which of the following future land use patterns best describe the commission's goals? And assuming we all answered, answered those, picked, picked one of those options.
Right, so then the second question, Michael, was what do you want to do on these smaller properties that are somewhat developed? And I, I think you somewhat had this discussion. So this is Highland Terrace, this is Meadow Wood, this is Dorset Heights. These are these areas that, you know, could be considered to be. Today rural subdivisions, I guess is probably the best way to describe it. They're not, they're certainly not, you know, unbuilt upon. But they're also not dense neighborhoods. And, you know, what, what do you want to see with that? And I think that where this comes in is, is Sharon's discussion with you about what infill looks like. And would you be comfortable if one of those properties, you know, a four acre property was intensely built upon with what's around it? Or do you want to see an allowance for things to be incremental around it? It's just a different question than a twenty acre parcel that is all greenfield. But I, I think you can have that with Sharon, and I, I think I've got some sense from you already from the dialogue tonight.
Okay, and you've probably got answers from all of us to your questions as well. It was part of our homework assignment.
Yes, I got answers from most of you on that one.
Okay, time for a beer.
Okay, well, how about some minutes first? Minutes, minutes of May twenty-five and June eight.
Minutes of May twenty-five.
I didn't have a chance to look at them, so I'll abstain. Sorry.
Okay, so it sounds like Bernie made a motion, Duncan seconded. Any discussion? Favor of the minutes?
I'm sorry, but I, I haven't finished reading them, so I.
Okay, we have two abstentions and four votes yes, so we are passed on the minutes. And then other business, anything else you need, Paul, on the schedule?
Paul Ingalls had something, and then I'll.
Paul?
Well, I just wondered if the meeting with the city council's been scheduled.
Yes, it's Tuesday, the sixth. I don't have an exact time, but it's in the evening.
Sixth of what?
Of July, so next Tuesday.
Oh, oh, no, you're talking about a different thing.
Oh, 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 sorry, you're talking about.
Paul is talking about the joint, Paul is talking about the joint meeting.
Ah, no, I have not heard a date on that. I will check in with Jessie tomorrow if she's got an update for you, though.
Okay.
She has a doodle, which is getting filled out, but not complete yet.
Okay, if you haven't filled out yours, please, please go ahead and do that. Two quick notes for you before I let you go. As I mentioned, I'm going to attend your next meeting on the thirteenth, but then I'm going to be on parental leave for a few weeks. Sharon is going to be there for your meeting on the twenty-seventh. In August, I would like to request that your meeting be not in the second Tuesday, but have it in the third week. Because A, I'll be back in the third week, and B, Sharon is not available the second week. So I'll send you out a list to see if you can sort of swap that meeting. I'm, well, you know, I don't want to skip a meeting because you're, it's such a busy time, but I also don't want to have a meeting where you've got no support. And then last thing on the list is, I added something to your agenda, which is just an FYI on an Act two fifty hearing that's going to take place. Site visit and hearing Meadowlands, eighty-five Meadowland Drive, which is the. It's the, the big building that's down there that has the. The heck is in it? That has the, the, the wind turbines above Dyna Power Building. So there, the, they've got a lot of land in behind there that they're looking to modify their Act two fifty conditions around ag soils. So I'm just giving you an FYI of that, that there's the hearing coming up. You and the council both have the opportunity, if you choose to be participants. But typically, the city is not a participant in something that's just an Act two fifty.
But we, we would have not, we wouldn't have standing.
You do have standing. That's why I'm sharing it with you, is automatically the planning commission and the council have the oper, are automatic parties if they choose to weigh in. But I guess my suggestion to you would be if you do feel strongly about it, to speak with counselors. It's sort of awkward that there might be two different bodies in the city, so mostly it's an FYI to you.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Yes. I move to adjourn.
Very good. I, I agree. Let's adjourn. Okay, bye, everyone.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.